Good evening. And welcome to the August 23, 2018 Board Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before we begin, as always, I'd like to remind our friends and colleagues to turn off any wireless communication devices or put them on vibrate so that they do not interfere with the taping of the meeting. And I would like to ask Mr. Valentine if you would please do the honor of leading us into Board Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Let us pray. Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Mrs. Berkeley, would you please call the roll?
Good evening, Board Members. Ms. Ahmed?
Here.
Ms. Boston?
Present.
Mr. Burrows? Ms. Eubanks?
Here.
Ms. Hernandez? Mr. Murray?
Here.
Ms. Page? Mrs. Quinteros-Grady?
Present.
Mr. Valentine? Mr. Wallace?
Present.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Dr. Wiseman? Dr. Eubanks?
Present.
Thank you, colleagues. Colleagues may have a motion to adopt the August 23, 2018 Board Meeting Agenda. It has been properly moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Thank you, colleagues. That motion carries. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to approve the July 12, 2018 Special Board Meeting Agenda? Someone asked if I take these separately. So, the July 12, may I have a motion? Moved and seconded to approve the July 12 minutes. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say no.
I abstain.
One abstention. That motion carries. And now, the August 8, 2018 Capital Improvement Programs Meeting. May I take a motion? Moved and seconded to approve the minutes for the August 8 meeting. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. Thank you, that motion carries. And finally, the August 9, 2018 Emergency Board Meeting Minutes. May I please have a motion? It's been moved and seconded. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed. Thank you, that motion carries. And now, we'll move on to Item 2.6 where we will have a news break entitled "Growing Greatness."
As children grow and learn, they're often said to blossom. And nowhere will that be more literally true than at the newly renovated Tulip Grove Elementary School in Bowie. For amid the splendor of its 13 new classrooms, its first-ever gymnasium, and an outsized library media center, there will also be permanently irrigated potted plants on the walls. Yes, those hanging gardens with hardy spider plants and colorful flowers will be a perfect metaphor for a LEED-certified school with a bouquet of educational opportunities.
But one of the things that's neat about this is that throughout the project, they actually sent me different variations of flowers that could go onto the wall. And so, I did have the opportunity to say with my green teacher at the time, this would be the perfect thing. She knows that I don't have a green thumb, so she was kind of like, you're gonna need something that's easy to take care of. But now, after finding out more about the wall, I don't actually have to do anything to care for it. But I do think that it's neat and kind of goes along with our blooming theme that you may start out as something small, but you are able to bloom into something great.
Both Principal Whitfield and Project Manager Will Smith may not be green-thumbed, but both are homegrown graduates of Prince George's Schools and anxious to describe all the features and what will be their greenhouse for learning. Did you ever imagine when you were going to school here in Prince George's County that one day you would be building one?
Never in my wildest dreams, honestly. It was one of those things where I kind of thought I was gonna be a veterinarian and kind of had a career change or a change in studies when I was in college and decided, you know what, I wanted to go another avenue, another route. And so, here I am today. And the school has numerous green elements within. You know, it has the geothermal. We have increased windows throughout the school. We have the various pullout spaces, LED lighting we have here. I mean, it's numerous things that the school actually has that has in order to try to get those points. You know, whether it's bike racks as well, so people can ride their bicycles to school. I mean, it's kind of a lot of points in order to achieve that goal standard.
But I think what they're gonna be most excited about are their classrooms. So, in their classrooms now, they're gonna have cubbies, they have whiteboards and smartboards. In the first kindergarten and first grade classes, they'll have classsets of iPads and grades 2 through 5 will be one-to-one with technology. Those are not things that we had at the original Tulip Grove. We also have a multipurpose room that turns into a gymnasium as well. So, we have a nice panel that comes down and you're able to divide it, so that will be new for them as well. And then, I just think this main hallway, when you walked into the old Tulip Grove, it just wasn't a lot of space. It was very tight. And that's one of the things that I notice about the building now, there's a lot of space to just kind of, you know, really kind of, you don't feel tight and squeezed. You feel like you're able to move and be comfortable in your learning space.
The flowering of talent extends far beyond Tulip Grove. Witness the nearly 300 new teachers who spent three days in boot camp recently in preparation for sowing greatness in our 209 schools. In sessions finely tuned for the digital age and inside a classroom filled with free materials, a microscope, anyone? The new teachers from wherever they hailed began to feel right at home. Has it been worth it?
It really has, actually. I just came from a session about using PairDeck, and I can't wait to use that in my classroom.
What is that?
It's like a platform. If you've ever heard of Kahoot, it's like Kahoot 2.0. And so, it's a way to engage students using technology. So, being able to bring that in the classroom while still checking on what they're learning and making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be versus not.
They come to get all that they can get before they start the first day of school. They want to be well-equipped. They want to get all the information that they know they won't get after the school year starts. They're not getting paid. They're definitely sacrificing. They haven't even gotten their first paycheck. But they've heard a lot of the good news over the last years, thanks to social media and Twitter, and they've learned that, oh, if I come here, I'll learn some great things about pedagogy, how to organize my physical space, how to have some really realistic classroom management.
We have teachers with various years of experience. We have teachers with zero years of experience. We have teachers with 20 years of experience. We have teachers with MBAs. We have teachers with doctorates. So, just not learning from a presenter, but learning from one another.
Of course, many of the new teachers didn't need to be convinced they'd made the right choice coming to Prince George's County. That's because they were already home.
I went to Dodge Park Elementary. I went to Concord Elementary. I went to Walker Mill Middle School, and then I graduated right here at Charles Herbert Flowers High School.
Did you ever think, Kevin, when you were walking these halls at Charles Flowers, that someday you would be back teaching in Prince George's County?
I was always hoping so, but I just didn't know how the stars would align. But I am really grateful. And it was funny because I actually still see a picture of myself in the Flowers Choir up on the wall, so it is all coming full circle.
And speaking of homegrown talent, consider our new interim CEO, Dr. Monica Golson, who was warmly introduced on July 31 by County Executive Ruchern Baker.
I believe that Dr. Golson is the right person at the right time to lead our school system. She believes that every child has greatness in them and that it is her job to lead and to help them grow. I am confident that she will move us in the right direction.
Dr. Golson is shiny proof that the apple doesn't fall far from the tree.
I became a mathematics teacher in 1991 at Sulan High School. And my desire was really to go in to teach mathematics and to focus on becoming an actuary scientist. And little did the students know that they would have an impact on my life those very first days that I walked into that building, because they changed my life. They made me realize that my passion was for children. And from that day forward, that has been my life's work. As Mr. Baker announced, I have been in Prince George's County Public Schools for 27 years, have never desired to go anywhere else.
So, as school is about to begin, enthusiasm is growing for one of the best years ever. With a bumper crop of new teachers and countless backpacks distributed at bus stops all over the county, all signs point to harvesting students more college and career-ready than ever. So, green thumb or not, teachers and students at Tulip Grove and everywhere else soon discover that encouragement, empathy, and enthusiasm are the best gardening tools ever. Look for greatness to start blooming in a neighborhood near you anytime soon. This is Dave Zarin reporting.
Thank you for that wonderful report. As you can see, it has been quite a busy summer. While many folks are enjoying a summer vacation and many of our teachers and our administrators have some well-deserved time off, Prince George's County Public Schools never stops working each and every day to make this school system great. And hopefully, that was a great representation that you saw just there. And with that, I will move on to the report of the chair. And I will begin, as I always do, honoring and remembering the lives of loved ones and people in whose memory we will cherish and whose lives will continue in our hearts. And ask you to join me in a moment of silence remembering their lives. I will start with Dorothy Waiters, retired Prince George's County Public Schools pupil personnel worker; Sylvester Barnett, custodian at Charles Herbert Flowers High School; Vitania Rivers, the niece of Thea Boyd Wilkins of the Board Office. And while we remember our friends and families, both near and far, I want to offer also and put up in honor and memory Aretha Franklin, international music icon and the queen of soul. Please join me in a moment of silence remembering these lives. Thank you, friends. We're starting off the year right, and we're ready for back to school. It is an exciting time of year. I'm sure all of you are ready. I was this morning, this afternoon, I stopped at my local Panera Bread where I met a group of teachers from Glen Arden Woods who were there for lunch for their first day of school. They stopped by for lunch as they were preparing for their classrooms and very excited about the start of a new year. And so, this is always an exciting time of year. I hope that everyone had a safe and enjoyable and fun-filled summer break, and we are ready to go for the year ahead. On behalf of the Board, I'd like to thank everyone, every staff member and administrator across Prince George's County Public Schools for working hard throughout the summer. You'll hear a lot more about that work a little later during our discussion. But we are doing everything we can to prepare for opening schools on September 4, and we thank you for that hard work. I'd also, colleagues, like to ask you and join me in bidding a very fond and heartfelt farewell to our Board colleague and Board member, Mary Kingston Roach, who retired from the Board this summer. During her term on the Board, Mrs. Roach led the Academic Achievement Committee in a successful effort to create Board Policy 1100 on community schools. Folks who know Mary know she is deeply passionate about all in education, but most particularly about the power and the promise of community schools. And she championed that for us. And thanks to her leadership, among many others, we are moving steadfast toward helping to develop some of the components of community schools. Mrs. Roach brought a wealth of experience and passion for the work that we do to advance student achievement in Prince George's County Public Schools, and we want to thank her for her hard work. Ms. Roach is on a work assignment this evening, so could not be with us. We have invited her back to the next meeting, so we will do something to honor her even more at the next meeting. But in her absence, let's please give her a round of applause for her service. Thank you. Finally, just a couple of upcoming meeting announcements. Please do not forget that on August 25, 2018, at 9:00 AM, we have the Back to School Fair at Prince George's Stadium. It is a tremendous opportunity for families to come and receive so many of the backpacks and school supplies that we have organized throughout the summer. It is just an exciting and vibrant activity with literally hundreds and probably thousands of families that come. And so, please do come out, Board Members and the public, to come join us at the fair. Our next Board Meeting is on September 6 at 7:00 PM, and the following one is at September 18 at 1:00 PM. Persons interested in speaking at meetings of the Board must register using our online registration tool found on the PGCPS website under the Board tab. Click the Quick Links tab that reads Public Participation in Board Meetings and Hearings, and we register folks on a first-come, first-served basis, starting four business days prior to the scheduled meeting and up until two and a half hours prior to the meeting's start time. If you want to register on the phone, just call us at 301-925-6115. That concludes my chair's remarks, and it gives me a great deal of pleasure to hand the mic over for her very first CEO's Report, our interim CEO, Ms. Monica Golson. Dr. Monica Golson.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the first Prince George's County Board of Education meeting for the 2018-2019 school year. And of course, as you know, this is my first Board Meeting as interim Chief Executive Officer for the school system. I'm extremely humbled and honored to have been selected to serve both our students, parents, and community members. I'm also excited to have this opportunity because I feel like this is the best school district in the state of Maryland. Not because I attended elementary, middle, and high school here, but because we have amazing staff members who help to support our students each and every day. Thank you. During this time of transition, we will continue to strive for improvement in the five main focus areas, which are academic excellence, high-performing workforce, safe and supportive environments, family and community engagement, and organizational effectiveness. By refocusing the work of our staff, revising strategies in those five focus areas, and creating a performance management system of accountability, we can implement the Prince George's County Public School vision with fidelity. That vision is to create a school system recognized for providing education services that will prepare our students to be college and career-ready. We have already begun the process of implementing instructional and operational changes throughout the system, including addressing grading and reporting policies through training and revised administrative procedures, which you will hear about shortly. I'm committed to keeping families and communities informed, expanding opportunities for input and partnerships, and collaborating with our Board of Education, our labor partners, our county leaders, elected officials, and many of our other stakeholders. As stated earlier, on Saturday, we will celebrate our unofficial start of the new school year at the Back to School Block Party, which is at the Prince George's County Stadium, better known as the Home for Bowie Bay Sox. And please ask that you join us as we distribute approximately 15,000 backpacks to our students. In preparation for the new school year, we have an exciting new webpage called Back to School where you can find everything you need to be ready for school, including school supply list, immunization requirements, bus information, back-to-school night dates, and more. Please be sure to make sure that your child has all the immunizations they need as mandated by the Maryland State Department of Education. Children who do not have their required immunizations must be excluded from our schools, so please make sure all of our children are immunized. Lastly, I want to take a moment just to extend special thanks to our maintenance employees. They have worked tirelessly over the summer to prepare our schools for our staff and students. And so, while many of us had an opportunity to have a break, they were working to make sure that our staff who rejoined our ranks on today and our students who will join on September 4 could enter buildings ready to learn. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Golson. We now move on to public comment. We have five registered speakers today. I've added a sixth who may have had some issues with registering. So, you have been registered. Just a quick reminder about the process. You've been registered to speak in a public comment forum where the Board of Education will listen to your comments, but the Board will not address your comments. You must speak at the topic for which you've been registered, and all registered speakers will have three minutes to make their presentation. At the sound of the buzzer, please complete your final sentence only. If you have written out your testimony, please leave it to the right of the podium so that we can put it in the record. We ask that you don't address individuals directly and use names. And if you follow these simple procedures, it helps us to make the process go along smoothly. So, we will begin this evening with, we have one speaker registered to speak on Agenda Item 4.1. We have Lowrie DeJager. Forgive my mispronunciation, is Lowrie. Not here? Okay, then we will move on to our speakers on non-agenda items. We have Charles Burt, speaking on Unit 1 Negotiated Agreement. Charles Burt is not here. Thank you very much for that information. We have Michelle Clark, speaking on teacher retention and turnover. I know she's here. Good evening.
Good evening. I spent Monday, as I know several of you did, over at Bowie State University. And what I noticed there was it seemed like we had to hire a whole bunch more new teachers than we did even last year. I know the number of packets we had to prepare at PGCE was for 1,200. Pretty high turnover rate. Just imagine the money that was spent preparing Bowie State and preparing all these new teachers when you have people who are already trained, already know the system, and were already here, but they fled to get paid what they deserve. Remember, certainly on paper, we're still four steps behind. 12%. That's a lot of money, and it would make a big difference for a lot of people. I know people in our building who went to DC. They told us that they were gonna make $20,000 more this year. And people who went to Montgomery County and other counties who are also making $10,000 to $20,000 more per year. I don't need to tell you, this county is a very expensive place to live. And for those of us who've invested in buying a house here, it's pretty difficult to make our bills when we don't get regular raises. I know we're getting one in November this year, and we got one last year, but it still doesn't make up for what we've lost. The time is now. We need to move forward on this. I know there's a memo of understanding to reopen negotiations to repair for past losses. And I know our new CEO has also made that one of her top-five priorities, which I thank you very much for, because it makes a big difference. We love what we do. We're dedicated to this county, and we have stayed through the worst times. And to top it off, I know it came from a grant, but new teachers hired this year got a signing bonus. It's real hard to explain to our Unit 1 employees, who are four steps behind, why people who come in brand-new are getting more than they are, and people are coming in on the right steps when they left and came back, and we're still stuck. This is something that needs to be repaired. I'm asking this Board to bravely step forward, along with our CEO, to make this right for everybody, because I don't want to see another 1,200 new teachers next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Our next speaker is Suzanne Johnson, speaking on resources for immersion schools.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Johnson. I'm a parent living in Bowie, so District 5, and my daughter is beginning her second-grade year at Phyllis C. Williams Spanish Immersion School, so representing District 6 as well. The parents at our school and other immersion programs have made a long-term commitment to a bilingual education for our students because we recognize the cognitive, social, academic, and employment benefits of being bilingual and billyiterate. And we'd like to thank the Board for their prior support, including the funding in the fiscal year 19 budget to hire teachers needed to extend the full Spanish immersion program to the 4th grade. I am disappointed, however, that despite this increase in our, despite the significant increase in our school size, we did lose an instructional lead teacher and several other instructional support staff. With the loss of these resources, I'm concerned about our school being able to effectively use the resources still left to ensure our students receive the full support they need. Outside school, our parents struggle to find Spanish-speaking support because it's not as widely available, and it can be very cost-prohibitive. Further, the immersion office has not renewed funding for our students to access MION. As indicated in the recommendation for the MION contract for Title 1 schools, MION is far more than a library of English and Spanish reading materials for students at my school. It offers students literacy skills that complement Common Core State Standards and a unique experience that propels them to become college and career-ready. It is very challenging to find reading materials in our immersion languages, so MION has been a critical resource for our students. My daughter, like many young learners, has struggled with reading. Seeing her frustration and wanting her to have the solid foundation she needs to succeed, I have made considerable time and financial sacrifices to get her both Spanish and English reading support this summer. I'm excited to share that I think she is now on grade level in Spanish and making rapid gains in English. After she read six books in a row last night, which sometimes it's hard to get her to read one page, she exclaimed, "I love reading." This is the first time I've ever seen her have this much confidence and excitement for reading, and I'm optimistic that with the support she needs, she will finish this school year fully on grade level in both English and Spanish reading. All of our students deserve this support that they need to be successful. Given that the entry to the full-language immersion programs is almost entirely limited to kindergarten, we must maximize student retention at these schools. Student support and intervention when needed is essential to maximizing retention. Therefore, I ask the Board and PGCPS leadership to work with the administration at both PE Williams and whatever other immersion schools might be struggling to ensure that these programs have the resources and effectively use them to ensure that the students have success. The success of these programs is a key, I'm on my lesson, it's a key component in making PGCPS a competitive school system that prepares students to contribute to our diverse communities with essential language and cognitive skills that are in high demand by employers in education, health, government, and so many other industries. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. Our next speaker is Teresa Mitchell Dudley, President of Prince George's County Educators' Association, to speak on teacher retention.
Good evening. It's good to see all of you again. Let's everybody take a deep breath and smile because it's back to school, and I'm excited about the opportunities that we have before us. We have had a lot of challenges over the past couple of years, and it's time for us to really work together. And I want to thank Dr. Golson for reaching out and making sure that the labor partners feel better and breathing a little softer as we move forward into this school year. Yes, we have some challenges, but the commitment to the directions that we were looking for in the memorandum of understanding, Dr. Eubanks, I look forward to working with you on that memorandum of understanding and see if we can get that worked out, because it's a new day now. And while things have been bad, I always am trying to look for the silver lining and where we can move forward. However, this year was a very hard year for PGCE. We lost a lot of really good teachers. I got a lot of phone calls over the June 5, July 15 weekend. Teresa, I gotta go. Teresa, I gotta go. Members of committees that we had working, I gotta go to DC. They're paying me $20,000 a year more for the same job. I gotta go to Montgomery County. They're gonna pay me $20,000 a year more. And then there's that other part, the softer part of the job, I think, is, there was so much pressure placed on administrators and teachers and principals in the building, and it's like a disease. It's very transferable. So I think now we need to look at, are we just being nice to each other in the buildings? Are we yelling at people? And I think that tone and tenor has been addressed by Dr. Goldson. But 40% of the teachers have part-time jobs just to pay their bills. There was a recent survey that just came out. 90% of the teachers are spending their own money on children. I mean, the backpack giveaway is great, but those supplies or those backpacks are gone by the end of September. And so we need to really look at how we're taking care of our teachers, our children, the memorandum of understanding. I want to thank Dr. Goldson for being very decisive and proactive about District 8's Elementary School, which I, when she called me about it and told me that there was a concern, I was very pleased that she immediately took action, because that's been a problem for the health of the children and our members. So I want to thank you all. Let's get back, let's get to work, and let's remember to love each other, just like we love the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dudley. And I'll just say, as a quick aside, President Dudley, your presentation at the New Teacher Peep orientation was outstanding, just fabulous. Thank you for that. Our next speaker is Linda Tucker, speaking on the AP 4215.
Good evening. I think it's a Katy Perry song that says, "After hurricane, every hurricane comes a rainbow." That's the period we're entering now. We're in a rainbow. We're starting off fresh, we're starting off new. But we have an issue on our hands in front of us that's severe. If anybody has read the newspaper, seen the news, we know that right now the Catholic Church is once again embattled with sex abuse scandals. We, as a community here in Prince George's County in Maryland, in the DC area, have been facing these charges and these issues for decades. What I found is, two years ago, Dr. Dukes from PG Community College, the president, presented, led a task force to find out how we can keep our children safe. Her number-one comment was, "We need to fingerprint. We need to secure and make sure that the people who are interacting with our children are not pedophiles." You guys created administrative procedure 4215. The first year it was implemented, the athletics department did not fingerprint a single volunteer. I brought it to the school boards, the school administration's attention. Instead of correcting the problem by enforcing it, they came to you, and now the policy reads that if you are involved with athletics, you don't need to be fingerprinted, you just need the commercial background checked. So that's a problem for me, for multitude of reasons. First, I have three daughters. All three, my oldest is a swimmer at Eleanor Roosevelt High School. Swimming has been inundated with sexual abuse charges and molestation charges coming to light. Olympians are coming forward saying they have been molested. So now I have a daughter in a system in an area that's high abuse, in a sport that's high abuse. And the response is, "Oh, no, they'll be fine." You can't guarantee that. And I find it offensive that we are now distinguishing between the safety of our children, whether they are in a building, on a field trip, in a classroom, versus our athletics. These are children, in the sport especially of swimming, where our children are dressed in their most vulnerable attire. They are very limited in what they're wearing. So just so you understand, the person at the door collecting tickets, the person at the stairs stopping people from coming down must be fingerprinted. The person on the pool deck mixed in with 16 swimmers doesn't have to be. My first question is, why? Why are we doing this to our children? And two, I'm asking you for help. I brought this to the previous administration, they said, "That was a board decision. Go talk to them." So now I'm coming to you as a concerned parent to say, please, our children should not be segregated and put at risk for funding reasons or for just sheer laziness. That is unfair, and it's going to cause greater problems in the long run, because our children can get harmed irreparably. So I'm asking for your help, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tucker, and thanks all of you today for coming to speak to us. As we move forward to the next agenda item, I forgot to mention, in my board report, that I wanted to formally welcome our newest board staff member who's here kind of in training, Ms. Anise Ellis. Let's give her a round of applause, folks. And folks, you all just don't know how tirelessly these staff work for us. They stick with us no matter how long the meetings last, no matter how many of them we call. They are there for us every day and taking such great care of us. So welcome to the family, Ms. Ellis, and thank you, Ms. Berkeley, and my other great, the other great staff of this organization. And so with that, let's move on to discussion item, and I will yield the floor to Dr. Goldson and her administration for presentation and discussion on the first day of school preparations. Dr. Goldson.
Good evening. In the first day of school preparedness document, I established five areas that I would focus on and that would allow Prince George's County Public Schools the opportunity to create a system of transparency, accountability, and a smooth transition as I serve as interim chief executive officer. This evening, we will discuss four of those five areas, which are the first four, and provide an update on transportation and immunization. This evening, you will not only hear from myself, but you will also hear from the amazing staff that has worked tirelessly to ensure that we have a smooth first week of school. Dr. Kyra Libby, Chief Academic Officer, and Dr. Douglas Strater, Chief Accountability Officer, will talk about academic preparedness. Mr. Howard Burnett, interim chief of Human Resources, will talk about hiring and vacancies. Dr. Wesley Watts, Chief of Operations for Now and Future, Chief of Information Technology, will talk about capital improvement, facility maintenance, and transportation. Mr. Antar will talk about information technology upgrades, and Dr. Gwendolyn Mason will discuss immunizations. Dr. Coley is not here this evening, and she is the Chief of School Leadership and Support, but two of her three associate superintendents are here, Dr. Carletta Merrill and Dr. David Curry, who will present on the school leadership side. One of the very first things I did once moving into this position was to begin reviewing and addressing any outstanding internal audit findings. During the June 28th Board of Education meeting, I shared that 17 executive-level staff members will be referred to Employee Labor Relations for further investigation concerning pay increases. To date, all 17 cases have been reviewed and a decision rendered, which required that all employees be returned to their original pay status. The use of a desk audit process has been recommended by Employee Labor Relations going forward if supervisors believe that a change in pay is necessary due to increased responsibilities. That information would then be presented to the Board of Education again for further review and final approval. In addition, an action plan was submitted in response to the Human Resources Internal Audit Report to correct any findings from the audit conducted prior to the end of the school year. On July 19th, I met with all executive-level staff members to share the plan for an executive and managerial reorganization. The purpose of the reorganization was to create an organizational structure that would allow parents the opportunity to get their issues resolved without having to contact several offices. It helps to reduce the number of executive-level employees and to create a savings of $1 million from the reduction of positions that will be redirected back to schools to the, for our classrooms and our students. I created leveled area offices for better monitoring and consistent messaging. All of our elementary schools are led by instructional directors who have been former elementary school principals, and the associate superintendent that oversees elementary schools has also been a former elementary school principal. We follow that same model for both elementary, middle, and high schools, just to ensure that we provided our principals with consistent messaging and to have leaders who have walked the same journey that they are walking now. We also have created an instructional director for charter schools to provide support to our charter schools, and are creating an instructional director for community schools, which will help to support the Board of Education policy that was created to support the creation of community schools. Each area office has what we call an area office resolution specialist. They were formally placed in our ombudsman office, they have been distributed to our three area offices, so that they can address parent concerns when they arrive in the area office. We're hoping that this structure will allow us to get to parent concerns quickly and be able to respond in a timely fashion, so that our parents and students can continue to focus on the delivery of instruction. The core function of our work is our schools. And at this time, Dr. Curry and Dr. Merrill will share what has taken place in the last few weeks in terms of principals, principal support and training, and then Dr. Strater will share where we are with the creation of our quarterly monitoring tool, which will be used to monitor instruction in each of our schools.
In order to ensure that principals were both aware and well-versed in the revised procedures, a principal meeting was held on August 8th. During that time, we had the opportunity to review both Administrative Policy 5113s specific to attendance, absence, and truancy, as well as Administrative Policy 5121 for grading and reporting. In support of Administrative Policy 5121, the principals were also able to experience the new grade change authorization module. In addition, IT was able to unveil the new grade, the new grad standards platform, which allows for monitoring of grade completion tallying. As a follow-up, on August 21st, an additional principal meeting was held in order to review any outstanding questions or concerns related to Administrative Policy 5113. In order to provide a deeper dive during that time, all principals were able to meet directly with their clusters, where they received the new systemic handbook, highlighting specifically 5113 and 5121. Specific to elementary schools in all, in all K8s, there was a review of Administrative Procedure 0016, specific to health and wellness, as well as 6130, which provide guidelines for indoor recess and physical education. Principals were directed to include those in their school handbooks and review with teachers during pre-service week. All instructional directors have received the same training and have been directed to monitor any concerns related to recess and also expeditionally in addressing any concerns provided around that manner.
So, good evening, Dr. Eubanks, members of the board. One of the foci of the Accountability Division is to monitor both students' performance as well as the district's performance as it relates towards the progression in the district's strategic plan, as well as other compliance needs for both the local, district, state, federal levels. The Division is currently identifying the key performance indicators, as well as the other potential data to support this effort. It's the Division's intention to report this information quarterly to the various stakeholders, including both school-based staff, as well as district staff and other stakeholders. Initially, we're going to release this information via spreadsheet because of the timeliness of the request. It's our long-term goal to leverage some form of technology to automate this process, whether it be through dashboards in the district's data warehouse, or through some other to-be-determined technology. But the way it stands now, our first release, we're looking for the end of the first quarter for this first batch of information. Thank you.
Good evening. The content teams have been revising and updating the curriculum documents and providing professional-
Excuse me. I wonder if you could just ask, if you guys, just say who you are each time before you speak, so that the audience can find you and know who you are. Thank you. Why don't we go ahead, Dr. Strater, and just say who you are.
Yes, I am Doug Strater. I'm the Chief Accountability Officer.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kyra Libby, Chief Academic Officer. So, the content teams have been revising and updating curriculum documents this summer and providing professional development for teachers. The team has also created a new Google site that is user-friendly for administrators and teachers that houses all of the curriculum documents and other resources per subject area, per grade level. Along with the curriculum documents, textbooks, and other supplemental materials have been disseminated, so that teachers are ready to begin instruction the first day of school, September 4th. There are 180 days of instruction, and we must utilize every minute. In addition, the Literacy and Numeracy Snapshot has been updated, and that's a tool for administrators to use to monitor instruction pre-K through 12th grade. Thank you.
Good evening. This is Antar. I'm the current CIO, Chief of Information Officer. In the technology area, over the last few months, we've invested over $3 million. And that includes upgrade to school with smart devices, smart boards, infrastructure. We have increased our one-to-one initiatives from 55%, from the current 11 school to 18. We have also provided a lot of training to schools on the deployed technology, so they are tech-ready. We made sure schools have the resources and the skills needed to utilize and maximize the use of technology in the classroom. As mentioned before, we have also automated graduation standard module that provides school counselors a tool to automatically tally students' credits against graduation requirements. This tool will help counselors validate students' readiness to graduate. For years, counselors have to manually count credit for the graduation. Students are assigned to graduation requirement based on the first year in the 9th grade. Counselors can monitor students' progress against graduation requirements from the time they start high school to graduation. For grade change module, we have developed an electronic PS140 for better tracking approval and denial of student grade change requests. The electronic PS140 allows school principals, teacher, and SID chairs to submit changed grade requests within defined grade change periods. The request is routed to each individual, from teacher to principal to instructional director, via workflow process. A grade manager and transcript manager at each school are notified via email to make grades and transcript changes for each approved request. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Eubanks and members of the board. I am Howard Burnett, and I'm the interim chief of Human Resources. It's my pleasure to share Human Resources information on behalf of Dr. Goldson. I joined this amazing team four weeks ago, and truly, I think that we've completed six months of work during that time. There's been an amazing and highly positive transformation of attitude and effort that has yielded much success and preparedness for the first day of school. Extended hours and weekends by Human Resources staff, with structured job fairs and interviews by principals and instructional personnel, with orientations and onboarding at the same location. Camaraderie of effort between administration, Human Resources, central offices, and school leadership teams has yielded 967 teacher hires this summer. And thank you to Chair Eubanks and Ms. Boston and Mr. Burrows for representing the board at the professional induction ceremony on Monday with our new teachers, which was exciting. We only have 55 vacancies, and it's interesting, those vacancies are in those hard-to-fill critical need areas that are evident across the country and throughout the state of Maryland. Every jurisdiction in the state of Maryland is a critical need area for those specialty areas, such as special education, science, and mathematics. However, we have 3,000 substitutes that are on board to serve our needs this year, and since 2015, all of those substitutes have been required to have degrees. Many of those vacancies that will be filled are also filled by teachers that only need praxis test examination. Our grant funding will support this year, all of those teachers who are on conditional certificates, so we're looking forward to many of those individuals to- certificates, so we're looking forward to many of those individuals to successfully meet the challenge. Also, this year, Dr. Golson implemented something new that I couldn't even think of way back when. She's providing the opportunity for those few substitutes that are in vacant teaching positions to plan and go to school with the teachers so that they can be ready for the classroom when school opens. So those substitutes and those few vacancies are being paid to plan with teachers so that they have their classrooms ready and instructional materials ready. On the bus driver issue, there are only 69 vacancies with more than 1,000 bus drivers, and in those vacancies, substitute drivers along with multiple runs will be implemented. We have 36 bus drivers in training, and then 15 others that were recently hired. And then in that other difficult area, because teachers, bus drivers, and nurses are challenged nationally, not just in Prince George's County. And with nurses, we hired 19 this summer since July 1. We do have 32 vacancies, 24 RN and eight LPNs, but we have eight agencies where we'll use contract nurses. We also have each school, which has an emergency care plan. We have CPR training that's been administered to staff in each school. Also, nurses can train staff to administer the epipen along with insulin. One of the other challenges that you know of and Dr. Golson addressed in talking to our labor partners also naturally was the administrative leave issue. And she charged Human Resources and the Office of Employee and Labor Relations to look at those who are on administrative leave this summer, along with looking at those who may be placed on administrative leave in the future. And what we found was that the majority of those individuals have minor infractions. They don't pose a threat to students, staff, or the organization in terms of being in the workplace. So what we did was, with the agreement and understanding with our partners and with the Office of Law, those individuals would receive a letter stating that they don't pose any threat to staff, students, or the organization. They would be able to remain in their work location with the knowledge in print that pending final review, there may be some form of minor disciplinary action. And at that time, rather than waiting three months for the security investigation or a challenge, we're able to send them back and/or have them not leave the work location. Now, of course, in cases with Child Protective Services, those individuals have to come out. But what we found with the great partnership that the school system has built with that agency, most of those findings are done within two weeks. And then, of course, we would decide whether those individuals would be returned to the work location. Thank you.
Capital improvement and facility maintenance is an area of particular interest, and so I conducted unannounced site visits to several of our schools on Monday, met with all of our project managers in our capital improvement programs department on Tuesday, and received daily, if not hourly, updates on many of our systemic projects. I'm highlighting four tonight that I want to talk about. The first one is Tulip Grove, which you saw in our news break. We will be opening a new school on the very first day, which is Tulip Grove. And so the news break gives more information than I could give tonight. Francis T. Evans and Hollywood Elementary School are both schools that experienced POD conversions. And POD conversions were open classroom concepts that were developed over 20 years ago. And we're now converting those open classrooms back to classrooms with walls where there's a little bit more secrecy, not necessarily privacy, so that teachers can teach and not be interrupted. Both of those projects are delayed in having delivery on the very first day of school. So for Francis T. Evans, one of the three PODs is created. And so, capital improvement programs provided temporary buildings for our students to be housed in until those POD conversions are complete, which will be at the end of November. For Hollywood Elementary School, they also had a POD conversion, and due to unforeseen circumstances, it also is delayed in completion. And so, there will be temporary, there's a temporary building there that has been placed for our students to be in until the completion of the POD conversion. I want to publicly thank Pepco for helping and assisting in getting electricity to Hollywood Elementary, as well as Drew Freeman, who's having work. They moved us to the very top of the list, and were able to provide support to us this morning, and we'll make sure Drew Freeman is up and running on Saturday in preparation for our students' arrival on September 4th. And then I also want to talk about the District Heights Elementary School update. On my very first day as acting chief executive officer, I received information from our building services staff that mold had reappeared in District Heights Elementary School, which was on a Friday. Our staff cleaned up the facility, and at that same time, I then requested that we get an external evaluation to determine why the mold continued to reappear. We received the results from that external evaluation last Wednesday. I then read the report on Thursday, and then did a conference call of key stakeholders in the school system to talk about what our options were on Friday. One of those options was to replace dehumidifiers in the school for the students to help to control the mold. I felt that that was unacceptable and asked staff to begin to look at options to remove students from District Heights and provide us options of where they could go. Staff worked throughout the weekend and provided six options that we could look at in determining where our students could be moved. On Monday, I then met with the principal and many of our staff in our operations team met at District Heights Elementary School to have a conversation with the principal about what took place and to provide the six options. None of the options are a perfect scenario, but the best option was for us to move the students from District Heights Elementary School to Forestville High School on the very first day of school. We know that every student at District Height is a walker, and so we will be providing transportation from neighborhood bus stops to Forestville High School, and our students will have a revised bell schedule in order to accommodate that request. We also will ask that the students remain at that school for the entire school year. It's important to note that in the FY19 budget, we had set aside $2.5 million to replace the air conditioning system in District Heights. We are just at the beginning stages, so I don't want the community to think that the very first day that the students are out, that you'll see trucks at the building beginning to install the AC unit, because we're still in the infancy stages where we have to design, have build, also put it out for a request for proposal, have a company agree to put it into the school, and then to install the AC unit. It will be able to move a little faster because we won't have staff members or students in the building. And so I'm appreciative that on today, the principal, Ms. Marlo Blunt-Rich, met with her staff, along with PGCEA, to talk about moving our students and staff from District Heights to Forestville High School. And a parent meeting was held this evening at 6:30 to discuss that information. I made sure that I contacted all of our key stakeholders in this process, and that is our labor partners, elected officials, made sure that I reached out to our board members, because this was a decision that was not made lightly. What's most important is that our staff and students must remain safe at all times. And because I could not control what the weather would be or the humidity level in the building, I felt it was necessary to move our students. We will work with our community to make sure that this is a smooth transition as possible. But at the end of the day, I've been asked to sit in this seat so that I could make sure that we provide the best opportunity instructionally for our students, and I believe that this was the best decision made. Thank you. At this time, Dr. Watts will provide an update about the water fountain restoration and air quality testing.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. Wesley Watts, Chief Operating Officer. The Water Fountain Restoration Project is a continuation of our water quality program. During this phase of the program, we are installing filtered water coolers, fountains, and bottle fillers. 110 water fountains will be installed by September 30. Another 65 fountains will be installed by 1031. These fountains are being installed in or near the cafeteria, the multipurpose rooms of each school. Once this phase is completed, additional fountains will be installed in high schools, middle schools, and other large elementary schools. Periodically throughout the year, the school district is challenged with aging HVAC systems, roofs, windows, high temperatures, and high humidity conditions, which as a result, has resulted in some schools experiencing mold or mildew in some of their classrooms. When this occurs, the building supervisor contacts the maintenance department for additional assistance. A team of staff or a contractor is hired to clean and disinfect the areas. Once this is completed, an air quality test is conducted by an independent contractor to ensure the building is safe to occupy. Just to note that all of our environmental staff are certified to take water and air samples in our school district. In addition to that, over the last two years, although there is no federal requirement for radon testing, the school district has tested 4,606 classrooms for radon. Of the 4,606 classrooms, 51 classrooms tested at an action level of four pico carries per liter or above. Remediation for these areas and the test above these action levels is to ensure that the area is getting proper ventilation. Each of these 51 classrooms was ventilated and retested. The results of those tests, the second test, 11 classrooms remained at an action level of four or higher. Each of these classrooms will be remediated by the start of this school year with a radon reduction system. It's a powered ventilation system. We will perform additional testing throughout the school year and test first-floor classrooms every three years. Let me move on to transportation. As you heard earlier from Mr. Burnett, we have some driver vacancies in transportation, 69 to be exact. Usually, at the beginning of the year, we will cover these routes by doubling up some of our runs, by having drivers pick up extra runs until we are able to fill the vacancies. So you may experience some late buses on certain routes. The school district is also engaging with the new union leadership and looking for ways to improve transportation operations. We will work together as a team to resolve our challenges. In an effort to continuously improve communications, the school district has added bus route information into the family portal in SchoolMax, which will be available on Monday. In addition, the school district will utilize robo-call and gov-delivery to send out mass communications about transportation. We are also launching a new mobile app called Here Comes the Bus, which will allow parents and students to track the arrival time of their bus. Thank you.
I just want to add that that tracking is like an Uber, where you can see where the bus is on the route to school.
Good evening, board members. My name is Gwendolyn Mason, Chief of Special Education and Student Services. The Department of Student Services has continuously provided and utilized progressive and innovative strategies to ensure that our school district once again meets the 98% compliance rate for immunizations. Those particular strategies have included a variety of things. In June of 2018, 6,000 families received letters from us notifying them that their children were not eligible to enter school without their immunizations. We also provided our parents with information about various different opportunities for them to get their children immunized and encouraged them to certainly work with their primary care physicians and pediatricians. In addition to the correspondence that was sent, information has been constantly available on our website, which provides parents with information about where to go to get immunizations. We've utilized radio announcements, as well as actually have had television news reports on our efforts to ensure that our school system meets the requirements that enables our students to begin school on September 4th. But this collaborative and innovative effort has also been done because we've had the partnership of three organizations. The Prince George's County Health Department has been one of our significant partners, along with the Maryland Partnership Prevention Program and Kaiser Permanente. Each one of these organizations has provided opportunities for our children to get immunized, and we're very proud of the work that they have done with us to help us to meet our goal. We will continue with the opportunities for our families in the event that, when school starts on September 4th, those particular children, if they have not been immunized, our Wellness Centers located at Northwestern High School and at Oxon Hills High School will also be available where immunizations will be provided. The Prince George's County Health Department is currently offering opportunities for our families as well. The Chevrolet Health Center, for example, is providing opportunities on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday from 8:30 to 4:30 p.m., as well as on Thursday from 11:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. for our families. And also, as a part of the back-to-school clinics, the Prince George's Health Department is providing opportunities on September 15th and 22nd by appointment only. So there are many opportunities to ensure that Prince George's County once again meets that 98% target. We are proud of the work that we have done. And one of the most significant pieces of information I'd like to share is that all of our principals have been notified of the exclusion of students and what to do in the event that a student does report to school on September 4th who has not been immunized. So we are ready to begin the school year with the intent of making sure that Prince George's County Public Schools students enter, meeting the requirements established by the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. Thank you very much.
I concluded the principals', the very first principals' meeting with a quote from Henry Ford, and I wanted to conclude tonight's presentation with that same quote. We started the process on August 8th with our principals of coming together so we could begin the process of making sure that we have progress. We believe that throughout this school year, with us staying together and working together, we guarantee you that you will see success, academic success, success as a school system, success with our stakeholders and our parents. So we know that working together, you will see success. Before we begin with questions and our responses to those questions, I just wanted to acknowledge that Dr. Cassandra Lassiter, who's the Associate Superintendent for our elementary schools, entered the room. She came late because she was at the District Heights Elementary School parent meeting tonight, and I want to thank our board member, Mr. Wallace, who stepped out of our previous session, so he could attend as well. So, this concludes our presentation. We're open for questions.
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you for that presentation. I have in the queue Burrows, Page, Wallace, and Williams. Please buzz in if you want to speak.
My first question, well, my first comment is I want to thank you for the decision of removing the District Heights Elementary School students from that building. They should have never been left in that building. I spoke with so many staff members who were sick as a result of that building, and I was very disappointed in the last superintendent for refusing to move those students into a safer environment, so I'm happy that you have the integrity to do that. I do have a question for Mr. Curry. You mentioned that you spoke to principals about truancy. Can you talk about that? Because that's a real concern that I have as it relates to the school district truancy.
So I mentioned that on August 8th, we reviewed a new revised policy that was created specific to attendance, absence, and truancy. We specifically looked at some of the areas that were highlighted, where there were overlaps between both the attendance and the grading policies, just to make sure that there was clarification.
I want to add to that, that the new revised attendance policy specifically talks about what happens when students are absent from school illegally and legally. So if a student has an excused absence, we will provide them makeup work so that they can make sure that they stay on top of where they should be in terms of the content that they're expected to learn. If a student has an unexcused absence, we will not provide the work that they missed. So if a student was truant, hooked school, they will not be able to get that work. We will be making sure that we push all school year the importance of attendance- We will be making sure that we push all school year the importance of attending school daily. Our teachers spend a lot of time preparing for the delivery of instruction, and we believe that if you're there every single day, then you will learn the content that you need to be successful.
I guess my question is, what is being done about truancy? So I know we're clarifying the rules. When I look at the Alvarez report, I saw in 2016, 30-something percent of our seniors had excessive absences, and then in 2017, it was 43.3%. And so I want to know, you know, I guess, what is the focus? Like, how are we getting our students to come to school?
So actually, our policy actually identified this before, but we retrained our staff on it, that after a certain number of days of absences, three consecutive absences, our teachers have to then begin the process of contacting parents. Their names are then referred to the school instructional team. We then contact our people personnel worker who then contacts the school. So there's a delineated level of action that we provided. We went back and reiterated what those steps are. In addition, all of our new administrative procedures has a section called Compliance and Monitoring. And so through that, we will make sure that those steps are followed as we begin to pull quarterly attendance reports and then randomly select students who appear on those reports to see if those processes have been followed.
Yeah, thinking that's an issue that I would appreciate if your administration focused on, because, I mean, all of the data shows that if students are not there, they are likely to get in trouble and to have contact with the criminal justice system. One of the other questions that I had during your overview, you mentioned that now each instructional director and associate superintendent must have experience in that area, whether it's elementary, middle, and high.
Yes, that is correct.
Was that not the case before?
In some cases, we've had leaders who have multiple experiences. They might have been in elementary and a middle school principal. And in the previous structure, it was a K-12 model. And though it's still important that we do a transition and overlap, and we provide opportunities for our principals at the elementary, middle, and high school level to still meet in that same feeder pattern, I wanted to make sure that everyone got the same consistent message. And the best way to achieve that, I believe, through research was in the level structure that we have now.
Okay. I think that makes a lot of sense to have people who have had experience in that, whether it's elementary, middle, or high, supervising those areas. That makes a lot of sense to me. And then going back to District Heights, you mentioned that the mold reappeared. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes. I'm sorry if I didn't share with you. The mold reappeared because we had had, if you recall, two weeks of extensive rain and humidity that, in some cases, was detrimental to some people's homes. But during that time, it increased the level of humidity that was in the building. That was a concern because I knew that we could potentially have that same thing happen again later on in the school year, because I don't have control over the weather.
Yeah, I guess I just get really disturbed by that because we've had humid days when the students and staff were in the building, and they were forced to go back into that building. And I know a lot of staff left and transferred out, but our students were stuck there. And so it's, words cannot describe how much I appreciate your decision to do the right thing by those students.
I do want to add that there were humidifiers that were brought in in the spring of last school year to help to mitigate the humidity level. And I'm sure that this situation was exacerbated by the two weeks of continuous rain and humidity. But it came at a time when I had an opportunity to request an external evaluation, have a sense of urgency on it, and were blessed to be able to make a decision in time that we could do something before students arrived.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. We have Paige Wallace Williams, Boston, Eubanks, and Quinteros Grady. Ms. Page?
So first, I would like to say, on behalf of the students of District Heights Elementary School, thank you for tackling the issue. And I have three questions. The first, in regards to the new water fountain system. So can you tell us which schools already have the new water fountain system, including the ones that were implemented this summer, along with the number of schools or which schools will have them implemented by the September 30th date?
So by the end of October, I can, I have the list. I will provide that to you. But by the end of October, all of our schools will have at least one filtered system and a bottler. Okay? So it's a combination. And then the second phase of that is we're going to go back to the larger schools and put more fountains in those areas by the gymnasium and other areas in the building. Okay? But I will provide the list to you.
Okay. The second question is about the Here Comes the Bus app. So I actually downloaded the app as you were speaking. So how will the login information be distributed to assist students and parents with using that?
So what will happen is parents will self-enroll. So you'll go in and you'll get information on what the school district number is. Okay? And then the parents will go in with information in particular to their child. They'll enter that information, and it'll be able to track the bus that your child is on, or your children, in the case that you have multiple children.
So is there going to be a sheet, or is it something that parents have to go onto a website that can find out what the school district code is?
Yes, so we will be providing that. We're sending a postcard home first with the link on it so that parents can go to that link and get information about Here Comes the Bus app.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. And the last question is about the one-to-one initiative for technology. So which schools gain that aspect? I know Potomac had it the first year, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I have a list I can provide you. There's 18.
Okay, sure. So I guess email them.
No problem.
Thank you.
And both of those lists, I'll make sure that we publish on our website so everyone can see them.
Thank you. Mr. Wallace?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Happy New Year, everybody. And I thank board member Page. My first question was about the one-to-one devices that was brought up. I just wanted to get a listing of those 18 schools and the plan from the administration to roll out in any further schools that is aligned with our movement towards educational equity. My next question was regarding the vacancies. I just wanted to get some clarification because there have been a lot of numbers thrown out tonight, and I just wanted to be sure that I got the right number. So of the, you said it was 900, sorry, Mr. Burnett, 965 vacancies, and those are just classroom educators?
Yes, 967 hired.
967 hired, oh, thank you. And there's 55 vacancies?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't have to be that scared. I thought it was the other way around. Okay. So that clarifies a lot. I heard 1,500. I've heard over 1,000 several times. So it's 965 were hired, and we have 55 more to be hired. And the 3,000 substitutes that have degrees but may not be qualified to be classroom teachers, am I hearing that correct?
Yes, and certainly they are assessed with regard to their credentials, and any that are in close proximity to getting degrees, then they're acknowledged. And we also provide some information to them with regard to what they need to do to be certified teachers.
And I'm sure that you all do, does Human Resources have some type of plan in place that could identify some of these substitutes that could be high-quality candidates to, in one day, be a certified teacher?
Yes, actually, some of those end up in our resident teacher program, along with having the credentials reviewed right at the time, because they submit their transcripts so that they can be verified in the system as degreed substitute teachers. And so they do have the opportunity to have that transcript assessed, and some of them ask for a particular area of specialty so that they'll know, you know, the requirements for an elementary education certification or a math certification and so on. And, you know, it's just public education, because, you know, at those high-priced private schools, then they don't go by the certification standards that public education goes by. So you may have a math major teaching a math course versus all of the requirements that public educators have to adhere to with regard to testing and certification requirements.
Absolutely. And my last question regarding the Human Resources portion of the presentation. Going back to, I guess, a little bit more than 1,000 classroom educators were hired over the summer. With the school system this size, is that average? I know last year was a lot more, a lot more than what it is this summer, but is that on par with school systems of this size and demographics?
It tends to be. You look at a county like Montgomery County nearby, they probably had upward of 800 teachers because of that retirement bubble that many are approaching, and then the challenge of many leaving the area and other, you know, issues related to either pay or decisions that they make individually. But it is pretty much standard for a large school system to unfortunately lose a large number of teachers. Nationally, most teachers unfortunately are looking at a five-year period, three-year period where they're transitioning, and we're kind of fortunate that many are staying in the area.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. And, Mr. Chair, just wanted to get some clarification. I believe there was some conversation last school year about a compensation task force. I believe that was a goal of the administration, because I can't fault a teacher for leaving for $20,000 more dollars. I would do the same.
Absolutely. As was referred to earlier about the MOU discussion that we've been having with PGCEA and Dr. Golson, that's a commitment. It's in the contract, and it's a commitment that the administration and the board has made, and you might want to talk a little bit more about that as well, Dr. Golson.
If you don't mind.
Sure. We are, as Dr. Eubank shared, one of my focus areas is to create a compensation restoration task force that will be made up of representatives from our labor partners, the Board of Education, elected officials, county government staff, so that we can begin to analyze and look at our salaries in Prince George's County as it relates to other local education agencies around the state of Maryland, and to determine ways that we can find resources and funds to support the increase in our teacher salaries. It's important to know that the compensation restoration task force will not only focus on increase for our teachers, but also for our support staff and our school-based leaders. So when we meet and convene, which will begin those discussions in the middle of September, we wanted to make sure that we got school open. But we will begin that process and work as a group to select an external evaluator to do part of that analysis process. The timing is key because we want to make sure that we find ways to, if we need to reduce some programs that exist to help support, but it's important to know that we will need an extensive amount of money, and we will have to get the support of our elected officials and our county government in order to fill the gap and to meet the needs of all of our labor partners.
And with that task force, let's see if I'm running. With that task force, will there be any community engagement? I know the outgoing county executive and members of the board and even members of the county government tried to recruit community support in getting additional revenues to tackle issues such as this and others. And that was not as successful as they had hoped. So will this compensation task force engage the community so that if that proposal of some measure needs to be brought towards the community for a vote, that we as a board can be good shepherds of that support and kind of engage in the public in a productive way?
Yes, it will. My commitment as the interim CEO is to make sure that we're transparent about the discussions and decisions that are made at the school level. And so the monthly meetings that are held with the compensation restoration task force will be summarized and published, as well as proposals heard from the listening tour that I will begin at the end of September as I go into the community to hear about the concerns of our parents.
Thank you very much. Always welcome at District 7. And speaking of District 7, I want to end there with District Heights Elementary School. I thought I was going to miss the first portion of the board meeting. I walk in, started right on time, 30 minutes late. But I wanted to thank the administration for the support of District Heights Elementary School. My colleagues brought up a lot of the concerns that the community and the key stakeholders have had. The community meeting went well, I would say, Dr. Lassiter, Dr. Saunders. Very thankful for the necessary changes. Want to thank Pastor of the District Heights Baptist Church that was there, Chief of Police, and Vice Mayor Metlock for their support as well. One thing, though, the principal did mention that with the transition to a high school, of course, there's going to be different structures. I think a lot of the smaller students, my tiny humans, could not reach some of the facilities, like the restrooms and things like that. So she was going to go out of her own pocket to IKEA and get stepstools. Administration just reach out to me and let me know how many there needed, and I'll purchase them. She doesn't have to purchase them for her old school. I'll purchase them myself.
We'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Ms. Williams?
Good evening. First, I want to say welcome to leadership, and I appreciate you taking on this challenge of running 209 schools, 130,000 students. And it's going to be a big challenge, but I want you to know that I'm here to support you, to make sure you succeed, because we need stability in leadership, long-term stability. So my first question is about academic preparedness. There was a discussion about literacy and numeracy snapshots, and my first question is about where will the information go? Is it going to be, I guess this is for Dr. Libby? There you are. Will this be shared just internally, the information that you gather, or will it be shared with our stakeholders? What do you see this being used for, this informational snapshot?
So it was shared with the principals back in July for the All Things Principals Need to Know, but it's also on our website, and I can share the link with you so you can get straight to it. It's in our literacy toolkit.
Okay. Okay, that's good to know. I had a question about the Chromebook, so that has been asked already. And I wanted to congratulate also our Chief Information Officer with getting this online graduation standard put up. We got the audit back in December. For us to have figured out what we needed, purchased, and implemented, that's a big feat in less than a year for a school system of this size. So I appreciate that work to get us up and running for this school year. My next question is about the nurses. The nurses that we always have a challenge, and I'm glad you mentioned that, this isn't just something in Prince George's County Public Schools for bus drivers, teachers, and nurses. This is a nationwide crisis because nurses are needed everywhere. So, but what is the plan for schools that don't have a nurse there every day? How do you handle those?
As I had mentioned, there are eight contract services that are used for temporary nurses who come in, and also we have central office nurse managers that will go and take the post as necessary to help also. And then there's a review of the critical needs of a particular school. So naturally, if you have a population that needs, you know, special medical attention, then you're going, you know, make sure that you have the necessary specialty there, you know? And certainly, we want a nurse permanently placed at each school, so we're continuing to recruit and being successful at that, because just to hire the 19 was an accomplishment.
That's a great accomplishment. And my mother-in-law, she ran the Philadelphia School Nurse Program, so I'm very familiar with managing nurses. So are we saying that each school will have a nurse, and then those specialty schools, those schools with special needs will have a special nurse? Is that what we're saying?
Mrs. Williams, nursing does fall under Student Services, and to complement the things that Mr. Burnett has said tonight, this is what we're going to do. First of all, within a matter of about another week, we're going to make sure that for every school that a nurse has not been assigned. We want to be transparent with our parent community, because we know that there are always a variety of medical needs in schools, and we want to assure those parents that they will in fact have their child's nursing needs met. We've decided that number one, each and every nurse manager will contact the individual principal of that school, review the medical profile and needs of those students, and develop the plan. Number two, once that plan is developed, we'll also make sure that any staff persons that need to be trained, that adheres to the Maryland Nursing Board requirements and standards, such as what Mr. Burnett said, there are certain things that are delegable responsibilities that nurses who normally perform a duty can be done by school-based staff. So we will do a thorough analysis, but we don't want anyone So we will do a thorough analysis, but we don't want anyone in our community to be blindsided by the fact that their school does not have a nurse. Nurse managers will play a significant role. They will be, again, working closely with principals, monitoring the medical acuity of the profile of students in that building. They'll also be on call, will set up partnerships between nurses. And we had a meeting this summer with the Department of Health about our critical shortage and we affirmed, just as you said and Mr. Burnett said, there's a national shortage of nurses. And so our district, although aggressively trying to fill the vacancies and will continue to do so, still has to come up with a progressive plan to be able to address the needs of our students. So I'm going to wait basically until I have a little bit more data because we're still hiring and we want to make sure that we identify the accurate number of schools that on September 4th will not have a nurse. But parents will receive a notice on September 4th and they will know how their school is being covered.
Thank you so much. So we talked about the administrative leave evaluation for those that are on long-term leave. And you mentioned something about evaluating them and if they're not, I don't know the term you used, but a student threat. That's the way I interpreted it. What term did you use?
Yes, I, I had, I stated that if they were not a threat to students, staff or the organization, because many of the infractions are minor with regard to procedures or an issue that will allow them to stay in place at their work location or be returned. Under Dr. Golson's leadership, we actually returned 60 staff members from the list this summer because they were able to be returned. They were in that category. So just with fresh eyes looking at it and a different framework to, to, to go by for this upcoming year.
Okay. That's, that's good to know. So now I'm going to move to the, the bus vacancies. Now, we mentioned that there were 69 bus vacant, bus driver vacancies. Was that before or after we now have District Heights Online as needing bus trips? Is there an additional addition to that or was that included in the 69 vacant?
So we will use the current drivers. Drivers will pick up extra runs for that. As, as Dr. Golson mentioned earlier, there's going to be a bell time change at District Heights to fit them within the runs. Okay.
So we don't have, we don't have a need for an additional. Moving to District Heights, and I'm running through these really quickly. District Heights, now we are talking about having the school close for the entire year to take care of the HVAC replacement. Is it your thought that we will do other things that are needed in the school to bring it up to date even more?
So yes, actually, when the team met with the principal on Monday and we discussed moving out, we did say, once we were past this point, we were able to move the students in and get them smoothly transitioned to their new site, we will circle back as a team to see what other work could be done at the same time that the, the building is vacant. Yes.
Yeah, well, let's use this time efficiently. And I think that's all that I have for, for you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Boston.
First, I want to say that I'm very pleased with what we've, information that we've received today. And I want to thank you and your staff for putting together this, I believe was really a good stare at accountability and just letting us know, you know, where the issues are, letting the public know where the issues are and how we plan on addressing those. So I really want to thank you for that, first of all. But I have a few questions, not a lot, because you know, I don't talk a lot. But I know. But Ms. Williams addressed one of the questions I, I had about the, about the teachers that are, we normally would have put on administrative leave or out without pay for such a long term. A lot of times while we do investigations, how we do it, I'm, I'm pleased to know that we're going to look at that and if those, they don't cause a threat to students that they're, you know, we can actually keep them in the classrooms. And I also like the fact that the subs, because a lot of the information that we heard last year from parents was that we had subs, subs couldn't do the lesson plans, they couldn't go into the system and put grades in. So a lot of our kids, our students didn't get those grades, those weekly, what is it, two grades every week or once a week that needed to go into the system. So I hope we have addressed that issue as well with the subs. But having them to do the lesson plan so they know exactly what it is that they're, they're teaching makes sense to me. So thank you for, you know, reviewing that. Dr. Watts, on, I think it was just you, you talked about the radon levels and I think you, if I heard you correctly, you, there were 11 schools or classrooms that might have, still have high levels.
There was 11 classrooms, yes ma'am, and after the tests.
But then you say you would go back every three years and to do those checks. So why every three years if you know that those 11 schools had high, high levels?
So I want to go back. So we tested 4,600 classrooms. All the classrooms are on the first floor. Okay. Radon comes from the ground. Okay. 51 tested high initially. A remediation of that is to try to ventilate the room, open the windows, the doors, that kind of thing. If that does not alleviate the radon, there's another way you do it through a powered ventilation. So you put like a fan system to get that, that, the air flowing through those, those areas. So 11 classrooms, that is being put in there. Okay? The, the powered ventilation, that system is being put in. Okay? Throughout the, throughout this year, we will, we will test additional classrooms, but every three years, we will test all the classrooms on the first floor. Very similar to lead in the water. The state of Maryland came out and actually made a law this past year about lead in the water. Okay? And they established every three years that we would go back, school systems are required to go back and test the drinking water. Okay? There are no requirements right now for radon, so we want to be a little bit proactive. So we're putting into place a method to test these classrooms every three years.
So maybe I'm, maybe I just don't understand, but if you have classrooms that you said have high levels and you put in some type of humidifier or whatever it is in there, so why are these rooms not tested a little bit often?
So I'm, I'm sorry. So when we put the systems in, they will be tested again. I apologize. I misunderstood your question. Okay? But once those are remediated, they'll be tested to make sure that that is fixed, that problem, that issue is fixed. And then throughout this year, we will randomly test some classrooms. Okay? And then we will establish every three years, a three-year period, that, that we will test all those classrooms on the first floor.
So what would cause, I'm not a radon expert, but no, I'm not. So what would cause radon in the classroom?
Radon just seeps through the ground. It, it comes up from the ground and it happens in our homes and it happens everywhere. And what it does, the, the gas will be basically in, in a clo, in enclosed area. If that, if that's not ventilated, that, that gas can build up there and it can be harmful to, to humans and animals. Okay?
Dr. Mason. I know we talked about that we, you know, we have a lot of opportunities for our students to get immunizations and we've done the same, different outreach opportunities last year, I think the year before, and, but we still continue to have students to come that for some reason did not get those immunizations. And I believe last year we had a deadline by which even after school started, their parents couldn't get those shots. So we still have that same deadline. I know sometimes we are, we are handicapped because the, the federal government or whatever, with the regulations dictate those deadlines, so.
That is correct. The 20 days is a period of time that you find in the laws around immunization. So, but with our progressive efforts again and working with the different partnerships, we really are able to steer families to those particular resources to really meet that. And that's why our district has been successful in meeting the state percentage rate.
So how do we handle a parent that for some reason, some parents don't believe that their child should be, or they, for whatever religious purposes or whatever, that they do not want their child to be immunized? So what do, what, what do we have in place for those, those parents?
It is true that there are some parents, a very, very small subset of parents, who may have for religious reasons a belief that immunizations are not, you know, required. And we would just simply, again, adhere to the guidance that's been given to us within our state policies about how we would handle those particular situations. Thus far, I'm not really recalling anything that has been problematic for our district in the last couple of years, but we will monitor that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Ms. Cantel Grady.
I also want to start with thanking Dr. Golson, your team, everyone for all your hard work. As I listen to the presentation and just reviewing, my interest is always to create systems and to sort of look at how to be proactive. And I really appreciate the work that's being done and I think it really positions us to, to, to continue to get better and to improve. The, the first mention, the, the Mr. Burrows mentioned about truancy, I think a huge part there to address is also like engaging the parents. And I think, you know, we really have to look at how we're doing that piece. And I appreciate that you're going to do a tour, Dr. Golson. I would definitely just encourage you to partner with us and we can help convene other parents or just community so that people are there and listening to the expectations and hearing that everyone is welcome at our schools. And oftentimes I think even, there's a lot of education that needs to happen when you have older children. Sometimes parents, because there's a lot of going on at home, can think that they're a little bit more self-sufficient and hands are off when we need them to be hands-on. So I think that's really critical. The other piece is, I'm very interested in the area office resolution. You mentioned it would be three positions?
Yes, there's one for each level, one at elementary, middle and high school.
So, so they would be working in collaboration with the area superintendents independently with the principals with coordinated effort?
They're actually housed in the area offices and they will work with the instructional directors and the associate superintendents at that level. Our hope is that, as that, at that, the specialist at that time for that grade level will become such an expert in the content and know that they won't necessarily have to direct the parent to another source. They can get the answer, contact the parent back, or they may already have that information.
Correct.
Helping to reduce the amount of time it takes for us to respond to parents and give a response to their concerns.
I really appreciate that thought process because I, I really think that you're, you're positioning that person to have access to, to key personnel, instructional directors, area superintendent. They, they should be able to like come up with an answer and oftentimes you're right. I think parents have, have provided feedback where they feel that they get a lot of runaround. So that, that's a, I think that's a really great way to structure. The other piece I wanted to inquire in regards to, to that is, it's how or how are you going to, because this also ties to the consent forms of the 6,000 for immunization. How are we dealing with our language? We're bilingual. I know Spanish, Amric, I'm not sure with others. I mean, oftentimes French, oftentimes I know that families aren't paying attention to that and they don't quite understand the information that is being presented around immunization. But also even in addressing the, and having solutions to issues that may be going on at the school. So how is that language access going to be coordinated with, with those pieces?
I'm going to ask, if it's possible, if it's all right, Dr. Mason, I'm going to ask Dr. Morales, our equity officer, to talk a little about that. And Dr. Mason can get more specific specifically in the areas of interest you're talking about.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello. We have been working collaboratively with the Office for Student Services. In order to have a joint effort, next Wednesday, we will be at Telemundo, providing information on immunizations as well as the free clinics that will be available. We have translated all the information for immunizations into French, Spanish. We have also provided this information in Amharic, Pashto, Dari and Arabic for our refugee and asylum students in two parent orientations that were put together by the International Rescue Committee and Lutheran Social Services. So we are getting out to the community. Furthermore, we will have handouts also at our back-to-school blog party so that everybody is informed. And we are doing a robocall, text and email to all of our parents who have signed up for alerts in Spanish, French and English.
Great. That sounds great. I think, and I, and I think that when we're talking about immunization and I'm mentioning systemic ways in which we sort of check and balance and check ourselves, it has to be ongoing. So I don't know if, you know, like the immunization piece quarterly, being able to look at not just before the summer starts where there's a huge initiative, but like really integrating conversations along the way where they're, you know, we're meeting compliance, but where we're really educating that this needs to happen. We should be chasing, you're around, 6,000 forms out there, although that's great and when you're looking at 130,000 students, but, and I think that that's the direction we have an opportunity to go when, when you're looking at the systemic way. I think I wanted to add a question regarding Hollywood. Is there a timeline as to when we think that's going to get done?
Um, I, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I see Will Smith, who leads our project managers. If he could signal with some fingers, what month? Okay, well, he's going to go to the mic. Yes.
That project is a phased project, so it's not going to be completed until next summer.
Oh, okay. Thank you. The other piece I was going to add, just in being in this position, I think this is my fourth year, transportation's probably been one of my top priorities or areas of interest, just because probably that's the area where I've gotten the most emails from constituents around transportation. So I'm, I'm happy that the, the Uber-like is, is in place.
Here comes the bus.
Here comes the bus. Here comes the bus. Thank you. The, the other piece, but the other piece to that, I think, once again, it goes back to coordinated efforts. That alone, I think is great, but one of the pieces that I've seen feedback or I've seen things play out has been where if the principals are not in tune with what is in place systemically, like all of this information, the instructional director, the area superintendent, I just, I've seen where parents call the schools and there is a breakdown of communication of information that should be communicated. So I'm just, one, I'm interested in knowing what has been the communication to ensure that, that everyone's on the same page.
So I know that transportation has been communicating with schools, informing them about here comes the bus. Information is being posted in SchoolMax on Monday so that parents can see the bus routes. There's a postcard that's going out beginning right here in this coming week that provides that information as well with a link to help parents guide them through getting information with here comes the bus. We also have a help desk of 25 individuals.
That's the same word. Was that added from last year? Because I know that was added last year too.
So, so we're continuing that. That worked very well for us to help parents and, and others at schools as well with questions that they have about transportation.
And I'm just adding, we also are sending out robocalls so that we can alert parents of how they can access the bus routes online instead of having to wait for the postcard. I'm sure they're just as anxious as anyone else to get their students back into school on Tuesday.
Thank you. Can I just, I just want to give a shout out. The academic achievement work with Dr. Golson, you were a liaison at that time and you pretty much rolled out or really reached out to the guidance counselors, which they were able to put together a college guide, college pathway, which is, was going to be on college pathway, which is, was going to be on the website for all of our schools. And I just definitely want to thank our professional school counseling team. They put a lot of work, they came back to us, we discussed it, they got feedback. And the idea would be that this is a working document, but I really appreciate your leadership with that as well as the, everyone that was involved. I know that they were very much invested.
Thank you. We have Ms. Ahmed, Dr. Wiseman, and Mr. Valentine. Mr. Valentine, but before we do that, I want to take our opportunity, so I think we forgot, to give our condolences to the Jenkins family. Pastor Jenkins of the First Baptist of Glen Arden, I think lost his father last week. And if we can take a moment of silence to, to show our condolences, please. Thank you. Ms. Ahmed?
Dr. Golson, this is your first full board meeting with us, right?
Yes.
Okay, so y'all don't know, in the back room, I was sitting in the back room and I was looking towards the head of the table. And Dr. Golson, it was so moving for me to see a strong, dedicated, qualified woman of color leading our school system. It was so moving. In six weeks' time, because you, and this has been six weeks, right? This would be?
Uh, no, it has not. I'm like, Mr. Burnett, it feels like six months, it was just July 31st.
Wow. So we're talking a little over three weeks. In a little over three weeks, you listened to a lot of the things that me, my colleagues, and community members have been saying for months and years. You listened to that and you cut central office, took, taking away offices that were not touching students. You reorganized the area offices to make them more academic-minded. You addressed the mold issues in District Heights Elementary School. Led remediation, here comes the bus, which Dr. Watson, we've been working on that for how long? Two years. And simple things like communicating report cards being late and what's going on with the graduation audit. And paying our people and paying them right, focusing on that. All of those things have brought hope. And I'll tell you for the past year and a half that I've been on the board, I was losing a lot of that hope, I was feeling really helpless. And I know a lot of community members were too. And so I want to thank you for bringing that hope. I, I really expect and suspect this caliber of work to continue. And I'm looking forward to that, so let me know how I can support. The, this presentation was very thorough. I really appreciated the fact that there were several members of this cabinet that were speaking about their specific parts of this, of the entire operation. I had just one big question because this covers a lot of the, the big, okay, broad issues. My question is, when our students and our parents and our teachers walk into school on September 4th, what changes will they feel and what changes will they notice?
Our hope is that what they will feel is that our school leadership and our teachers are going to be responsive to their needs and concerns. I shared with our principals on August 8th that teaching and learning will take place on day one and we will not stop that process until the very last day of school. Our hope is that our parents will feel that we are partners in this process. And if they need something, that they can go directly to their school leadership first. And if they feel like those needs aren't being met, that they could move forward up the chain of command to get their responses addressed. Transparency and accountability are extremely important to me. We have to be held accountable. We all have this job because of children. That should be our focus. Without our children, none of us would exist. And so every opportunity I get, I will make sure I talk about the great things that our students are doing and they do it because we have amazing staff members. So they can expect to have a responsive staff member respond to them. They can know that we're being held accountable. I know that the board members will hold me accountable for the work that takes place each and every day. And that continues through the chiefs that have been selected. They will be holding their staff members accountable and it will move from there. Transparency is key. And as Dr. Strater shared, there'll be a monthly, quarterly monitoring tool that we will use to provide to our schools, but an analysis process that we will share with our teachers and our principals and talk about what we can do to improve instruction. We can't make changes unless we know what it is that we have to improve on. We can sit and talk about it, we work with our curriculum partners to provide those resources to make sure that there's an improved and increased student achievement. What I will say is that this won't happen overnight. It will take time. And I believe with the assistance of our board members and the staff that's here tonight and those that are deployed to schools, that we can make a change. We did not get here overnight and it will not happen. Those changes won't happen overnight. But with constant and deliberate and thoughtful communication, we can begin to change the tide.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. One quick question. There's some folks that are confused about the use of the Raptor system on the first day. Could you please address that?
Yes, thank you for asking that question. A memo will go to all schools tomorrow. But on the, I stressed to our principals during the principal meeting that student safety is of the utmost importance. But we also realize that on the very first day of school, many of our parents take our students to school. And for our elementary students, they do want to escort their students to the classroom. Because of the volume of parents that'll enter our schools on the first day, we will relax the use of the Raptor system so that parents can escort their students, their pre-K, K, first grade, it could even be up to third, fourth, whatever that grade is, so they can escort them to the classroom. During the first week of school, we'll begin to monitor the number of parents coming in. And then we will go back to the use of the Raptor system. So during the morning hours, when our students are brought to school and escorted, their parents will take them to the classroom, they won't have to use the Raptor system. And let me explain to our community, it's, parents have to take their driver's license or Maryland Motor Vehicle Administration ID. And it's scanned through a system to determine if there's any outstanding warrants as it relates to violations against our children. If they are identified, then we don't allow them to go from that point in the school and the principal then comes and has a conversation with that person. We keep track of how many people there are that experience this. It's not a large number, but it's a way to provide a safety precaution to our, our community and make sure our staff and students are safe. So we realize the importance, we want to make sure our parents know they're our partners. And we don't want them to feel like they can't come on the first day of school. But we also want to make sure that they know after day one, we will go back to that regular system so that their students are safe.
Thank you, Dr. Golson, and thank you to the team.
Well, Ms. Ahmed said a lot of the things that I wanted to say about how much I've appreciated this report. And in some ways, you've, it's a little deceptive, but in a very good way because you have made it look like, oh, this is just the way things are happening. And listen, I know it's been a heck of a summer for all of us and particularly for those of you who are over at that end of the horseshoe. And I so appreciate the competence that you've come, brought to this report. It's just, it makes us all, I, it makes me feel better. And I, I think a lot of people around the table would agree with me. I have two really quick questions. The first question has to do with how charter schools are organized around your new ID system. Because I know in the past that sometimes all the IDs don't understand some of the uniquenesses of charters. And I'm wondering if you've addressed that in any way? And if not, that, if that maybe could be something that would be, get your attention here in the next year or so?
Let me share that the person selected to oversee and assist our charter schools has had experience in working with those charter schools before. So when the announcement was made, many of them were extremely excited to have her back with them. What we also did during the summer was go back and look at the evaluations for all of our charter schools over the past couple of years. I put that information in a notebook and I provided it to the board office so that our staff could go back and access and look at that document. It provided me an opportunity to look at the evaluations of all of our charters over the last couple of years and what we need to do to make sure that we continue to evaluate, but now make those evaluations public so that our community can see it. And then I also asked at that time that staff in the charter school office, do an analysis of our evaluation in comparison to other jurisdictions. I also put that information in a chart and provided it to board members so they could see. We will do, make sure, we will make sure that there's a structure and process that we will continue to monitor our charter schools and also be explicit about and transparent about how they're progressing. So that when we do come to the table and look at the renewal of charters, you will already have ongoing information that will help you to make decisions about that renewal of the charter and the number of years that should be granted.
From my experience working with the charters here in the county, that I think those, those points will make a really big difference in how the charters operate and, and how they feel that their uniqueness is recognized. One really quick question for HR. With my many years in the county of working with newly mentored teachers, I know that we lose some good beginning teachers because they are, they don't get their school assignments early enough in the year, whereas some of the counties around us will tell them in April or even earlier where their school assignments are. So I just have a quick question. Have, have you been aware of that issue? And if you have, have, was there any change this year in when teachers found out about their assignments? Because I know some of the students from the University of Maryland where I worked would often say that they would not get assigned to a school until late, mid-August. And other schools, other counties around would get, tell them a little earlier. And it really made them choose the other counties. And so I was just curious about if, if you'd had anything to do with that idea or anybody had said anything about that earlier?
Yes, having that combined session where both the candidates arrived and they had already had their credentials reviewed. So the principals were there and able to select the candidates right at that time. And, and the individual teachers knew what school they were going to prior to them even going to the orientation session that particular day. As I walked through some of those job fairs, I sat in the chairs with the group of teachers who were ready to go to the next step for the orientation and talked to them. I was excited because they were coming from all over as Dr. U. Banks and the board members saw who attended the professional induction ceremony. And they were excited about knowing what school they were going to, knowing what they were going to teach, and having that opportunity right then at that particular time.
That sounds great and I think it'll make a really big difference because I, I know for years I've, I've heard that kind of feedback for, particularly for brand-new teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine.
Thank you. I just have two topics which have been talked about, but I just wanted to add, it relates to employee compensation. And I believe this is an important topic as well. I believe in the end, we're going to have to find a new revenue source in order to do that. But as we're having this conversation, you know, the mention of teachers going to Washington DC, getting $20,000 or not, $20,000 more. There's a lot of backstory to that, that we have to have a conversation about when you do put this together. People like George Parker, who I know was a president of the Washington Teachers Union, who's really sort of the father of the current teaching salary there. It started off with a $60 million donation for the Walton Family Foundation. It also led to a lot of the collective bargaining rights of the Washington teachers to be, you know, stripped away. It also led to half the city being run by charter schools. And so when teachers leave here, if they go into a charter school, they may be getting a salary increase because they're getting a private source addition to their salary. So let's, let's tell the whole story about, about where they're going and what it means so we have an apples-to-apples comparison. At the same time, I want to talk about transportation. You know, I've been on a board for five years and I think every year we have this conversation. And we have 130,000 students. But if one kid gets dropped off the wrong stop, you know that the media is going to be right there. And that'll be the story, it won't be that we, what we did. It'll be the one kid who got off the wrong stop and a bus driver who left him there. And so I think to do the best we can to make sure it doesn't happen, and it's hard to bat a thousand with 130,000 students. But I wanted to ask, whether it be Dr. Sanders or someone else, I know that we try to do a dry run before the first day of school, right? And so you do this dry run and you hope the kids, so this is what it's going to be like. Young lady, young man, on the first day, get off here, wait here, mom and dad, please be here on time, please drop them off. The bus driver knows who's on their run, where's the last drop. If the kid's not there, please take them back to the school. The administrator knows to wait there, et cetera, et cetera. Is, are we doing anything differently this year? Or something we maybe started last year, but we're being more effective this year? Where maybe we're incorporating parents in the pre-first-day process of making sure their children get off at the right stop? And we're dealing with some instances, four, five-year-olds. And so in, in order to mitigate that happening for the sake of the child, the parent, and for the, the potential blemish they will have on a day that I believe is going to be outstanding already, what are we doing to make sure that we, the students, the bus drivers, the schools, are ensuring that we have a smooth transition on the first day and that students are getting off at the right stop and that bus drivers are doing what they're supposed to be doing?
So we just spent the last few days of this week training all of our drivers and bus attendants, in particular emphasis on our kindergarten, pre-K, and three-year-olds of knowing who's on the bus, making sure that they have updated route sheets and they'll get those again right up to the first day of school to know particularly who those younger children are. We know that a lot of times in the past when that's happened, it's been that youngest group of kids where that has, that confusion has happened. We've also given all of our elementary and K-8 schools vests, the orange brightly colored vests, for all of those students to wear this year. So they should wear them to school and home every day for the entire school year. That's going to help the driver to quickly identify those kids so that when the door opens, if they just try to get caught up in the flow of kids and come off, it'll help the driver see them and say, no, you're not supposed to get off yet. We've worked out policies, which were really already in existence with schools, but talking with the principals who have agreed to make sure that when the bus comes on the very first day, there's going to be an adult that also meets them at the school to make sure they know who those kindergarten kids are that got off to verify they're in school. And they're going to walk them back to the bus. Drivers are going to have conversations with those adults at the school level to make sure we know who the children are, there's no confusion about the address and any special instructions that parents may have given in terms of who's going to meet them at that bus stop. We have said to every driver that if they arrive at that bus stop and they're not, the adult is not there or the person that was identified there to take that kid back to the school so that the school can help us make contact with that parent to take them home.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I guess my follow-up question just came to me. What I've heard in the past, often times, is if something does go wrong, when parents call, oftentimes it's such an inundation of phone calls that they're waiting or put on hold, are we ensuring that we have enough man and woman power on those phones on that first day to be able to field those? And we haven't, you know, you know, we have time, we have time to do that. But to ensure that we, make sure that parents are not waiting for a very long period of time, that someone's be able to respond to say, we're checking on that, we'll get right back to you. Your son, your daughter is, was driven back to the school because they missed their stop. And so when you get there, please show ID, Ms. Johnson is waiting for them and she's wearing a red jacket, I don't know. But that's something I think that those, those are the two things I've heard a lot, at least on the first day. It's that I called and I waited or, you know, the one kid, you know, who, who was left. So just a suggestion, and I mean, if you have a response, if not, then I just suggest that we try to, at least for the first couple of weeks. As you know, after the first month, everything sort of figures itself out. Bus drivers I spoke to over the summer have talked about, it's the first week or two and everything sort of figures itself out. But those first couple of weeks, can, if we can ensure that we have people on the phones, I think that'd be really helpful.
We actually have an enhanced phone bank where we have personnel on staff from 6:00 AM until 6:00 PM or later if need be, until all the buses come back in. And those individuals are there strictly for the number their parents call and they have access, they're in our, they're right in our building where they can get to the radio dispatchers, the bus lot supervisors, or whoever they need to verify what's going on on those buses. They can also see the GPS tracking of the buses if there's any question about where the bus may be. So just as you said, the beginning calls are probably when we get the highest volume. Last year we tracked it and we went from the first day where we had a little over 3,000 calls, second day that pretty much cut in half. And as each day went on, it decreased because most of those are just that- Because most of those are just that initial question about a parent that's not sure about the bus stop, not sure about some of the tidbits of information that they need. The great majority of the serious calls where somebody is maybe saying, hey, I'm not sure if my kid is there, whatever, while they still can call on that line, that's where the bus app is hopefully gonna help us. Because instead of having to call as their first recourse, they'll be able to actually look on that app, and as Dr. Goldson described it in a very Uber-like fashion, actually see where the bus is. If the bus is running late, it's gonna show them, for example, that the bus has not been to the stop yet, because that's where a lot of the confusion comes, when they're not sure, did I miss it? Has it not been here, et cetera? So we're hoping that's gonna aid parents in their communication of that. And of course, they always can still contact the school, and schools have a direct pipeline to us. One of the other advantages to the app is that principals are gonna have a web-based interface where they can see all of the buses that are attached to their school, and they can also help to give a status of what's going on with those routes.
And just to your point, and I hate to bring the conversations my wife and I have about the system into the conversation, but I'm going to, she's watching right now. Green Bell and other large middle schools and high schools often have students who, the buses come late to pick them up because they're doing so many routes. So last year, I think they, they had students up until, I don't know, 5:00, 5:30 in the gym, and it was like 500 kids. What happens when a bus has not even gotten to the school to pick the kids up, and the kids are waiting in the gym? How does that app affect that?
In the same way. So in the beginning of the year, buses are gonna be late, the first few days. Principals hold them a little longer at the school, takes a little longer for those buses to be dismissed because they wanna make sure they have the right kid on the right bus, and we know that. So sometimes principals at the later schools, such as the one you're mentioning, they're kind of behind some of the other schools, and that kind of causes a delay. So while we may know that at the transportation office, that principal may not know that then. So this interface may help with that. They also do have a principal hotline, which principals only, to call our office, and we can at least get that status. Now, after that first 30-day or so period of school, when most of the routes have stabilized, in situations where that has continued, then we look with those principals to see what the reasons are, whether there's some type of adjustment to the routes, whether there's a shortage in drivers that day, or whatever the case may be, to work on making sure that doesn't happen. But the biggest thing that we want to improve on this year is our commitment to principals to get them more, a better sense of what's going on and get the answers a lot quicker so they at least understand what's going on, to be able to communicate with the students and parents, this is what's happening and this is why, instead of just the wondering of why that occurs.
Sorry, honey. Thank you.
All right. That was round one. Exactly. And now we have three people registered for round two. I have Burrows, Williams, and Quinteros Grady. Let's go to Quinteros Grady. I mean, let's go to Williams, I'm sorry. Let's go to Williams.
Thank you. Back to the presentation. And the conversation about compensation. Dr. Goldson, you mentioned that you were, that task force would be looking at bringing all of our staff into, up to par in their, their compensation. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so at the, I think one of the last meetings at the, one of the last board meetings at the end of the year, I think we calculated that to be about $80 million.
Correct. So I looked back at the number of employees we have and looked at the years of 2010 to 2012, which was the timeframe where we lost salaries due to the sequestration period, and it came to approximately $80 million.
$80 million. And so just to put that in perspective, this year, how much did we get from the county and state for? Well, you don't have to think about it, because I know it's about $74 million. And that $74 million-
Total.
Yeah, total. For programs, the current increases that we're giving to staff, improving our schools and things like that. So that's why the task force is going to be so important to see how we can reach the goal, because we do need to bring our staff members that are doing a phenomenal job with our school system into competitive salary ranges. And how we figure that out may be an opportunity to get some private dollars brought into our school system, to get some, to figure out how we go to the public and ask for more money. So this isn't just something that we can roll out tomorrow. This is going to be a challenge that we're gonna have to overcome, and it's gonna take everyone's brain power to figure out how we do this collectively.
I agree.
So the other part that I wanted to touch on was the substitute teachers. And I was encouraged to hear that you said we have 3,000 substitute teachers on the role or on the plan to use throughout this year, correct?
Yes.
And the fact that, that each of our substitute teachers need to be degreed. And that doesn't necessarily mean a teacher degree, they could be an engineer, but they're teaching our students. But you also mentioned something about preparing some of those substitute teachers to pass the praxis. Can you talk about that? Are you saying that there are just some teachers that, some substitutes that are, that may have a degree in teaching but just hasn't passed their practice and they are?
Yes, the, the individuals that I mentioned in that category could have potentially been on a conditional certificate. And the only thing that they still need to do is to pass the praxis test. So support in that particular area to enable them to do that. And they may have passed their content area praxis, because praxis one is your math and reading basic, and then your content is praxis two. So they may have passed their content area, and they just need to pass that, you know, math portion-
That other part.
-of, of the praxis one. And that, you know, support would come to them through the Office of Talent Development and other sources, our university partners to help them meet that need.
Just pass those other parts. And so I think it's very important that we share that, because the impression that's given out in the public is that we have people that we pull off the streets sitting in front of our kids, you know, delivering substitute teaching. And that is not the case with what you're saying here, is we have people that are highly educated that may not have passed the test. And so if we, if we have people that are highly educated and have the ability, that was a quick three minutes. I just want to finish up real quick. Maybe it's more of a process and implement, implementation thing that we have to get across better, to show them how to do the grading, to the lesson planning and things like that. And I think you did cover that as part of your discussion on having those subs participate in the programs with the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows.
What's the status of the lights at Oxon Hill? My time is going.
We received pricing for those, for the lights at Oxon Hill in July. It came about $250,000 over budget, so we're gonna re-advertise that and see if we can get it lower than that.
Okay, so we have no real timeline?
At this point, I had to talk to Earl Hawkins. We're looking at trying to schedule that af-
My time is going. I'm not talking, my time is going.
Scheduling that to occur after football season?
Got it. That was it. That's all I have. I mean, I feel like I can take the rest of my concerns offline. I mean, it's been a long meeting already, so.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Ms. Quinteros Grady.
I just had one, two questions. The, the document or this one page or arts integration, are we continuing, we're gonna continue that? And it's, I see that it's expanding-
Yes.
Is that gonna be self-selected, or is there a process in which schools are gonna be added to be able to do, have arts integration?
Arts integration is added based on the willingness of the staff in the building. And so that increase is based on staff interest and making sure that they wanna do it.
So that will continue? That's, that's pretty awesome. The only, the other comment I wanted to make regarding the nurses, and I think too, Dr. Goldson, you helped me with this. This was, it's something I also have been following because we've had, had where schools do not have a nurse, and there's challenging situations. So I really appreciate you assessing those needs. But I also think that there might be an opportunity, and I don't know if I can just encourage that we look at the AP for, that we have in place for nursing. I believe that probably we're tougher on ourselves in what the criteria is than the feds at the top. And so what that does, it limits us in trying to be innovative about possibly creating a pipeline that we can look at and work with Prince George's Community College or other colleges in the area. So I just would wanna put that, because that's an interest of mine, and I have people that are willing to, to be at the table to explore this. But I just think that because it's a national issue, it's not one, we're not trying to recruit, that we're gonna have to think outside of the box. And I would love to just, you know, you know, see that if this can be explored. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine.
Really quickly to my brother in the back, again, the project director, Will Smith. Will Smith, very famous name. And my colleague, Mr. Burrow, just reminded me of a question someone asked me about Potomac High School. Was there ever a plan to put a turf field into Potomac High School? And if so, is there a timeline for that?
So there is a plan, and we actually have a design already, both Oxon Hill and Potomac. The, the overall issue that we kinda have right now is the fact that there isn't sufficient funds in order to cover both Oxon Hill and Potomac High School. I believe that we received about $1.5 million from the county previously to actually tackle both projects. Historically, we know that that is not, that hasn't been sufficient in order to handle one project, let alone to try to tackle lights on Oxon Hill in addition to the turf over at Potomac High School. We just received $300,000 in a Redskins grant. I was just notified today from Earl Hawkins, which will help support those projects, and we're also looking internally to try to, to try to identify additional funding to cover the costs. Oxon Hill lighting came in about 725,000, and then Potomac came in about 2.1 right now. And the issue with Potomac is they have, actually have a large asphalt area behind their stadium, which we have to do remediation work in order to actually pass permitting in order to cover, you know, some of the stormwater runoff that we have back there, in addition to a lot of trees that needs to be removed in order to support the installation of the lights out there as well. So kind of a lot of additional work has to go into Potomac, which kind of resulted in the pricing kind of coming over, I'm gonna say, $300,000, $400,000 than previously received on other projects.
So that timeline, similar to Oxon Hill, would, would it be like next year, depending on how much money we get to add to the 1.5 and the 200 million, 200,000?
At this point, we don't wanna go in, we're gonna re-advertise it, Oxon Hill, and we're gonna do a best and final with the contractors who submitted pricing already. So we're hoping to actually get that down. And so contingent based on if the funding is identified for those projects is gonna determine when we can start it. If that's something that we have and we can identify quickly, it's probably gonna happen after, you know, football season. We've talked to the AD over there, we talked to Earl Hawkins today, and he's looking as if, you know, we might as well just play the games this year there and then look at having the construction start after the season.
All right, thank you. That concludes our discussion item on preparations for the first day of school. Thank you all so much for the tremendous work and preparation that you did on this. Thank you, board members, for your thoughtful questions and comments. We move on now to item 5.0, the consent agenda. And I will yield the floor to Dr. Goldson for an introduction of items 5.1 through 5.6 under the consent agenda.
Items 5.1 through 5.6 on the consent agenda requires board approval of a land exchange agreement for the New Fairmont Heights High School project, and proclamations commemorating National Day of Service, National Hispanic Heritage Month, Constitution Day and Week, Library Card Sign-Up Month, and Attendance Awareness Month.
Thank you, colleagues. May I entertain a motion to approve items 5.1 through 5.6 under the consent agenda?
So many seconds.
Thank you. Ms. Ahmed.
Just a couple of questions, Dr. Goldson. For the Fairmont Heights Land Exchange, I noticed that the North Brentwood Elementary School site was on that list, and I, I was thinking, doesn't it, does it make sense to release that site if we know that there's overcrowding in the north?
So this occurred a few years ago. The transfer of land was based upon the 30 acres at Fairmont. And the North Brentwood is a very small piece of land. So in the transfer at that time, the team decided to transfer that to, in order to build the Fairmont, you know, the Fairmont facility. We also had to buy additional parcels at Fairmont in order to do that.
Okay, so that decision was already made, and this is just confirming that decision?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct.
Okay. The other question I had was around the Attendance Awareness Month. Is this the first year that we're recognizing this?
No, it is not. We, we, if you notice every meeting, we are normally commemorating lots of things, but no, it is not. It's, we've done it for multiple years. As stated earlier, though, I will be on my tour and making sure when I'm in front of parents and community members that I stress the importance of attendance, but it's not.
No, I appreciate that, especially given a lot of the issues that we had with the graduation rate incidences and how attendance was related to that. I think it makes sense, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. I'll now put the vote before you to approve items 5.1 through 5.6 under the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you, that motion carries. We're now on 6.0, the budget consent agenda. I will yield the floor to Dr. Goldson for an introduction of items 6.1 through 6.4 under the budget consent agenda.
Item 6.1 through 6.4 requires board approval of a contract for web filter equipment and services, the September 2018 expenditure requirements, and final acceptance and payment for contract with Myon LLC and Naviance.
Thank you. May I please entertain a motion to approve items 6.1 through 6.4 under the budget consent agenda? May I have a second? It's been moved to second. And Ms. Ahmed.
Mr. Antari, I just had a quick question about the web filter equipment and services. Can you explain more about what we're getting from this contract? Because what does it explicitly provide for our system? I'm not very clear on that.
Well, it actually provides a better security for students and better filtering capability and features. It also require, it has better performance and smaller appliances. And it also goes better with the new infrastructure upgrade that we have between the school system.
What does that mean?
Well, the current system, what we, we used to have is, we're going to, from is light speed. If we have, for instance, an incident of a student communicating with, for instance, a life-threatening situation or trying to commit suicide, if we get a call from the police, in some cases, we get maybe 48 hours to 72 hours to locate that person. This will provide a better tools for us to locate it early, a lot faster than before.
Anything else? So just allowing us to identify clearly information of people within our system, is that?
Yeah, I mean, it's also give us more clarity on filtering the web and secure the access for students.
It serves like an additional firewall so that students can't access some areas that they might have been able to on the previous one.
All right.
Ms. Ahmed, this is in reference to ERATE, service, ERATE. This also follows the Children's Internet Protection Act. It's called CIPPA.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Burrows.
Can you give an overview of items 6.3 and 6.4?
I'm gonna ask Dr. Mason to go ahead and do Naviance while Dr. Strater prepares for title one.
First of all, I apologize. Naviance is an extraordinary tool designed to enable our high school students to really progressively plan their college and career path. But it also includes a significant amount of participation of parents in that process. I am really delighted that the Board of Education has fully funded Naviance. Other neighboring jurisdictions have utilized this phenomenal tool for the past 15 years. And so we are finally at a place in Prince George's County where Naviance is now available to our high schools. We successfully piloted Naviance during the 1718 school year in a select number of schools and received great feedback. My staff and student services attended the national conference in California this summer, and Naviance is- and Naviance is such a dedicated team that they even came to our district this summer and volunteered to support us in our efforts. And so we put the right to work around student records and helping us in those particular areas. Naviance is a phenomenal organization. It finally puts Prince George's County in a position that now our students as well can have access to a state-of-the-art system that really helps to guide them in their planning as they think about their career path.
So it's a preparation for career software?
It's really a process. When you think about transition, I think of it in terms of transition planning. When you think about the thought that goes into your, your high school years, the courses that you're taking, the discussions that you have with your counselors, your teachers, your parents about your career goals, Naviance provides this really structured, phenomenal platform that really provides the students with an opportunity to really plan effectively. And so it really will help us, again, with our, our graduation rate, our trends for post-secondary outcomes. It really serves that purpose quite extraordinarily well. So again, I thank the board for full funding of that.
I just want to add, one of the great features of Naviance is that students, once they graduate from Prince George's County Public Schools, can still access the program. So it shows our commitment to students even beyond grade 12. Last year, the Board of Education approved us to pilot it in several middle and high schools, and through the budget through this past school year that's approved now, we're able to do it at every middle and high. I appreciate the opportunity to allow us to try it first with a small subset of our population and work through the kinks and look at what we had to do to make sure all of our professional school counselors were trained. Now we're able to roll it out to everyone. So thank you. I'm also going to have Dr. Libby speak about Myon, just because it also is connected to literacy. And then if you want to add something, Dr. Strater, you can.
So Myon is a digital resource. It's like a classroom library, but students can access it at home, at school, and it's many, many, many books that they can read, and it enhances their reading level. So the elementary reading office actually adopted Myon five, six years ago, and we've used it throughout Prince George's County, and we've also used it for like our summer reading list. But now Title I has, have, they've set aside funds to purchase it for their Title I schools. But it's an excellent resource, the teachers love it, and the students really love it.
Dr. Goldson, I would like to see program evaluations for all of the contracts like this moving forward. So, you know, not tonight for these, but if we are contracting out, you know, for technology, services, or platforms, or really anything, I would like to see evaluations on, on each of these.
All right, so what we'll do is then our team begin to compile that list. We'll also reference places where our research and evaluation team has done a good job of also doing evaluations of some of our programs and referencing those. I'll provide an updated document, I think I gave one last year, that showed which programs were evaluated by our research department. So I'll make sure you get that and look at, to find a way that we can list ours and then figure out a way to, to make sure we share that data.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, real quick, I, I couldn't agree more about evaluating these programs, but you guys talk great things about Naviance, but as I understand it, there's two really important and practical things that it does that is, that is game-changing. And that is greatly facilitate, enhance our ability to get transcripts to colleges on a timely basis, and to facilitate getting recommendations for our seniors to colleges, two problems which have been major that my understanding is Naviance is, really, really helps a lot with.
That is so true. I don't know how we could have missed those two most important pieces, only because the program is just so extremely large in the way that it can support our students. But what has happened now because of technology is that requests come in all the time for transcripts, and they're just being transferred now electronically. So what this does is take away from students having to go to the professional school counselors with stamp envelopes, ask for four or five transcripts, wait a few days for those transcripts to be produced, then put them in an envelope and hope that they get to the school. And this now program will allow them to put the request in, and it literally be done electronically within 24 hours. And students are able to get a receipt that the transcript has been delivered to their institution of choice. So thank you for reminding us, that's a key component.
That's big, that's big. Thank you. All right, seeing no further questions, then I'll put the vote before you for the budget consent agenda, items 6.1 through 6.4. Mrs. Berkeley, please call the roll.
Ms. Ahmed?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Excuse me?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mrs. Quinteros Grady?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Dr. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ananis?
Thank you, colleagues, that motion carries. We'll now move on to item 8.0, follow-up items. Colleagues, 2017-18 board member attendance records can be found under the follow-up tab in Board Docs, as has been requested by several board members and others. Those are available, we'll try to do those quarterly from, from now on. Colleagues, I will now entertain a motion to approve actions taken in executive session on Thursday, August 23, 2018. It has been properly moved and seconded that the Board of Education hereby approves actions taken in executive session on August 23, 2018, as follows: labor negotiations, personnel matters, personnel appointments, legal matters, student appeals, and administrative matters. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you, that motion carries. Colleagues, may I have a motion to adjourn? It has been properly moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned, have a great night.